Hey, it's 7:00 PM, August 1st, 2023. This is the Wayne Township Trustee Meeting. And welcome, everybody. Please sign in if you haven't. Can I have a roll call, please?
Call roll. Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Ms. Coleman.
Here.
And it's obvious Mr. Patrick's not here. He's ill tonight.
Yes. Okay. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 18th, 2023.
And I will second.
Okay. But all is a favor. I guess you both are.
Aye. All right. And I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting that we had last Friday, July 28th, 2023. Approve those meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Yes. All is a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any changes to the posted agenda? We do have some changes, but we'll be doing those as we go through.
Yeah. They made adjustments.
Made adjustments, which is fine. Any citizens' comments tonight? All right. Moving on, we have the Road Department report, Mr. Cambry.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
Um, now we've, uh, we're still waiting on the red light for Cook Jones Road. Uh, I would imagine it's coming here in the near future. Uh, have you talked to Mr. Howard?
Yes, sir.
I did call and left a message, but I haven't heard anything back. Um, I'm diligently searching for a new plow truck. Or new to us anyways. Maybe not necessarily new to, uh, new to us, so. Um, and all our, uh, the other reservicing projects all look wonderful. I'm very extremely pleased, so. And then we're just back on to, uh, we got the third round mowing done. We're back on regular other projects. So that's all I've got.
More trees to pick up than you since last time, I think.
Yes.
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 Uh, that was lovely.
So that's all I have unless you have anything to pass on me.
Nope.
No, thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Welcome back, Chief Shu. On vacation.
Only update I got is emailed out the updated run numbers for month. Uh, 150 runs for the month, uh, 91 PMS, 48 fire and 11 public service. So that puts us at 52 over last year. Now, you can see when I sent that out Wednesday before I left again on vacation, uh, 1.3 to 1.50, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a jump.
Well, they had squad around, car wreck, structure fire, all within 30 minutes of each other, so.
Wow.
Busy for them. That's really all I got. Other than the updates and new business.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is, we don't have anything from Stacy Williams on vacation today. So, uh, we'll move on to Gus, our administrative report. Mr. Edwards.
Okay. Uh, Fire Department Staffing, the sign-on bonus program that was reinstated for Fire Department. It's already created some active recruitment for more members. Uh, we've got a strong interest in advanced EMP class. It's going to be held at Salem tomorrow at Fire Department beginning on the 3rd and ending in November. Uh, we have two applications tonight for us to, uh, contract with our members to pay for their, but I think Paul said there's another two. I believe they're also going to paying the other way.
Yes.
So they don't have to commit. Um, so that's, that's good. ODOT was out last week and, uh, they increased some signage along the 734. Uh, mainly between here and Smith Road. Uh, both intersections signs out here have been increased in size along with the, um, uh, this traffic, cross-traffic does not stop. Those are increased inside also. Uh, intersection ahead, the yellow signs with the crossmark on it, uh, those were added. Uh, so a lot of improvements for this intersection. Uh, nothing out of Carter Drive yet, but, uh, that may still be on their waiting list. Uh, reviewed the Tarma property casualty insurance. So we'll take the max on it tonight. Uh, they're getting back with me and, uh, as of the time of the meeting, I haven't got complete answers on all this, but the increasing of our limited liability, currently we have $3 million as the minimum standard. Uh, they've got options in there to increase it higher. I'm recommending, I'd like to see us probably go up to $5 million. There's been a lot of litigious, uh, activity out there and seeing how we have funds, you know, they're, we have a whole lot higher risk of people coming, you know, after us or something were to happen and so forth. I don't want to jeopardize the taxpayers' funds, uh, due to lack of the amount, the monetary amount of settlements. I've been told has been greatly increasing. Uh, $3 million is a drop in the bucket now for anything. Uh, also, they're checking to see that right now we have $250 deductible on all of our equipment claims and so forth. And trying to price in, see what that stage is on premium. If we go up to about $500 or $1,000, pretty much any type of claim right now, $250 is a drop in the bucket.
Right.
There really is very few of us left that are using that $250 deductible. So most of the, their clients are using $500 or $1,000, so.
Have we had any claims here in the past five, 10 years?
Yeah, we average about, uh, probably one claim a year, plus or minus. I mean, if I took the last 10 to 15 years, it would probably be about 15 claims. Some of them small, you know, no large claims, but, uh, maybe a couple a year. Then they go a year without any claims, so.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be curious then to see what the rate change is for those two. If we, because if we do want a year and it only drops us a little bit, then it's not.
Yeah.
Too much, yeah. Yeah.
So I was hoping to have that back before today, but I, I don't. Uh, Stacy on his own, she's on vacation until Thursday. Uh, she's been working on about three different residents on permits that are going to need variances. I can see I misspelled variances.
Yep.
Uh, at the time of this meeting or before the deadline for the August BZA, there's only one that's actually applied. So she has two others, and I think she may be working with them to, and they may be adjusting their location of buildings and that type of thing to get away from the variances. So two of those may go away, or I think one for sure is going away and the other one may hasn't really decided whether that could be the variance. So they do, it'll be the following. Uh, County Engineer released, uh, the new tax remittance to the existing requirements of the standards for design, reconstruction of streets and roadway facilities. They've been working on this since about 2016 or '17. Uh, County Commissioners will behold a public hearing on these on August 42nd at 9:00 in the morning. And these have been vetted by the developers and Cincinnati Home Cores Association. They've all, uh, signed in or, you know, have been able to put input with this all. Uh, and so has the local jurisdiction and so forth. So with that being said, I had in the back of the packet then the new road design for open ditch. And that would be, uh, a cross grain of six inches at the, at the edge of the pavement. And if not, then it's 12 inches of aggregate base. And there's been an increase of, depending, I think, on the, the road, either an increase of one to two inches of additional asphalt. So the design standard hasn't changed a whole lot, but, uh, and also the way it's being laid, they got it laid in, I believe it's six inch. Uh, I focus more on design, but each layer is tucked in six inches.
Great.
So therefore it's, it's called a, you often end up with a, it's a safety, uh, safety edge pavement. So if you go up against the pavement, you're not going to end up in soft ground and so forth. Then you get back, then you get back on.
Yeah.
I think that's what they, they call it. They don't list it on here or whatever. And in this miscellaneous stuff, uh, let's say we trustees tended to, a little my river Palatino on last Friday, and, uh, I did sit in on the research results on, from LPA for intersection modification using many and modular roundabout methods. And it was, it was pretty interesting. And that was a research project they had going on for about two and a half to three years and just showing the results and so forth. And, you know, very positive. And then this footnote out here, the magazine content's going to be due first of September. So if anybody's got anything for their department, you know, it's kind of about the month of the, of the year.
You gonna do it?
Yes.
All I have at this time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gus.
Mm-hmm. All right. We are on to new business then. Our old business and, you know, the website update status and fire levy. For, and that today. Sign-on bonus, um, that's, that's been going very well so far. Hopefully we get some people, I don't know, Amber McCarty was having some people come through.
Yeah, we received a couple applications, never.
You did?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. All right. All right. Um, any other old business?
I do not have any.
All right. Any questions or concerns of those?
I had none.
Nope. Me neither. Legislation. All right. First one is Resolution 2023-55. Resolution declaring it necessary to levy additional tax in excess of the tenement limitation to proceed with submission of the question to the, of the tax to the electors. And I guess this is our final vote on this?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. This is the 2.25 mil again, continuous. So that's the way. Do we still have, do we have the language yet how it's going to be?
Um, yes, it is. This question, can I have that in fact?
It's right down the next, if you go on down past the resolution.
Yeah, I think I saw it.
That's resolution very similar.
Yes, there it is. Okay. Yep. I'm sorry, I read that. Okay. All right.
The difference is I've got the updated language with the lights going on. I'll have to get staircase back to the auto office.
Okay. All right. And then I guess when we, when we sell this, we're going to have to really focus that it is for personnel since this is so generic sounding to, I don't know. If I were reading this, I'd be like, well, why do they need more money? But, um, but it is for.
Correct. It's hard to read.
It is, it is, um, that it is for personnel.
Yeah. The biggest thing about it is that we want to try to keep it as simple as possible. Go for the personnel, fill what we need. Um, we're no different than any other community. Everybody is also struggling for people, um, the rates for everybody, all that stuff. You know, we're not immune to it. Ever since past COVID, everybody's got new business models. This is the same type of approach we're trying to do. We're trying to get it out there to the public to show them what kind of need we have. The personnel needs to be able to supply what we give out to our residents. And we're going to have to do that. So this is one way that we are trying to do it and try to go out to the public and ask for some help and assistance.
I agree. I'll make a motion to, um, approve Resolution 2023-55.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion about Ms. Coleman, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-55. Call roll, Ron. Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick is absent. This resolution is hereby adopted. This the first day of August 2023.
Right.
Thank you, guys, for putting in the time and helping us with trying to get the right idea and the right thing. Everybody here put in some time and effort into that. We appreciate that. Hopefully our residents can see that as well. So thank you. Good, Gus.
This is an order for you to pass that down. So I put it in here. This, this is all stuff that takes the board questions.
Is that things we need to do? I think that is God.
Yeah, when you got Sarah.
Okay. Okay. Next is Resolution 2023-56. And this is entering into a continuing education contract with one of our, um, Wayne Township Fire Department employees, Melinda, for an advanced emergency medical technician program, uh, which is at the Salem, uh, Fire Department. So I think that this is a, a good thing for our people to go through, get them more training, get them more certification. And I, I reviewed the contract. I don't know if you did about.
I reviewed it really quick.
Okay. Sorry.
And that was good.
All right. So, and I just validate, um, Daryl and Gus, that we, I think we already approved the resolution where this would be paid out of the ARCA funds?
Uh, I think that's mentioned, yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure that it is if that's what the board's desire.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I desire that. You desire that?
Oh, I desire that.
Okay.
Okay. I deserve the fact that it's nice letting everybody see how, you know, the contract and stuff like that.
Right.
Put it up on the, on the board for everybody.
Yeah. That, I mean, to me that retains, retains them a little bit longer and it's a more well-trained personnel. So glad that she wants to do this.
Yeah. I'm glad we can help.
I know. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-56.
I will second.
Okay. I have a motion about Ms. Coleman, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-56. Call roll, Ron. Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick is absent. This resolution is hereby adopted. This the first day of August 2023.
Right. The next one is Resolution 2023-57, which is basically the same thing for the, um, continuing education, but this is with Tanner Patterson. Um, did he sign the contract already also?
Yes.
Okay.
Signed a modified one up, but with the one year, I believe. He still has to commit to one year.
Okay. All right. You have any other questions about Tanner's?
No, I think it's good as well.
Okay. All right. And the same thing with the ARCA funds. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-57.
And I will second.
Okay. I have a motion about Ms. Coleman, second of Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution 2023-57. Call roll, Ron. Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick is absent. This resolution is hereby adopted. This the first day of August 2023.
Right. Next is our, um, Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, OTARMA. It's our insurance. So this is a resolution approving the property and casualty insurance proposal as submitted by Burnham.
Burnham.
Burnham Flower of Ohio for the Ohio Township Association Risk Management Authority, OTARMA program, and authorizing the township administrator to sign all documents. So do you want to, do we want to wait till we get the information? Because this is due, what is this thing due?
It's due on the 19th as our renewal date. Um, I'll be, I'll pull up. I've got most of the questions answered. Um, what I got this afternoon.
Gus gets a lot of email.
Okay. The questions we have is a legal, uh, legal defense claim. They have on there $55,000 for underground storage tanks, which we currently don't have. So I question whether or not that was a boilerplate standard that they have for all jurisdictions. And in blue is their reply back. Uh, this has to do with reimbursing the deductible for the coverage that they, uh, get through the state. So basically, what I was concerned about is that we've always had this $55,000, that that's when we also had the underground storage tanks, which we no longer do. Uh, we contribute, when you have underground storage tanks, you contribute, uh, to Buster, which is a state of Ohio program, and they fund anything over $60,000 for any leakage or so forth in underground storage tanks. So we currently don't have any, but we do have an inactive leakage site in the 165 Miami Street. Uh, so, you know, it's got the potential to maybe rear its ugly head if we come time to sell the property and they were to do a, some sort of a test or whatever, and it was to come back positive again, where it's already been shown to be negative and taken off the books. So, uh, the long and short of it is, is that this $55,000 that they have into our coverage is built into our, everybody's premium so that we'd cover anytime anybody would have underground storage tanks. Because Buster does not start paying until he reaches $60,000 amount is paid out. So OTARMA is covering the first $55,000, then jurisdiction, the township, the municipal policy of $5,000, then it goes into the state of Ohio Buster program. And we've, we've all been through that and it's, it's fun. Like to go through the end sometime and then they're like, not. Uh, 2022, and you might notice in the listing, uh, we had a fire truck. It was supposed to enlist in an ambulance. Uh, it's the 450. Um, right now, it says if I receive it, it won't waive, uh, plus it changes the, it changes the ambulance exposure charge, so it's best to do it by waiver of endorsement after the fact. As long as short of it, they're going to go ahead and, if we go ahead and approve the renewal, then they'll correct it afterward, so it's good for the next year or more. It's very similar, like if we buy a piece of equipment during the year, a lot of times they won't charge us a premium. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Usually the first vehicle, they just count it in there and let it go until you get the next renewal date and then it's updated. Uh, number three, can, can you quote a $1,000 deductible on each equipment, uh, in the autos? And they said they're going to submit the option, which they have not yet. That's what I was waiting on. And then is there any savings on going to $2,500 property deductible instead of $1,000? Like on our, our property, um, on our properties, this is a physical properties of all of our location, those are $1,000. So we talked about raising those to 250 up to $1,000 on equipment, this makes equipment and so forth.
Have our claims listed in on equipment in autos?
They, we've had, over the years, we've had everything from autos to radios to cemetery fence to, I.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's been a little bit of everything. Roof damage, we just got a claim this year, it's submitted for roof damage, so. So I can't, I really can't think of anything. I mean, uh, duty vehicle officers, uh, those wrecks, we had an ambulance wreck one time, so those have probably been the biggest claims. Take claims over.
Probably that last expedition, isn't it?
No, it was only $8,000, $9,000 less.
No, it wasn't really dollars, anything large. I didn't really, but we've had like.
The one ambulance that was totaled out was on the other people's insurance. We had to fight for the extra money on it, but that was, it was hit head on and I believe it was in a ditch when they hit us.
Well, um.
That's really more.
So it's due on the 19th, you said?
Uh, that's a renewal date, so I need to get it in before then. So what, let's hear, I'm highlighting what we're looking at actually on math was, I need to clear that out. 165 Miami Street, the contents we got insured for, I think, if I go back to what we saw, it's roughly $250,000, $230-some thousand dollar worth of contents. We also have a, anything that's not scheduled, anything that's not on those listing pages. Uh, so it's a non-scheduled item. We have that, all those items which are just miscellaneous, anything that's under, uh, what's our penalty?
$3,500, huh?
$3,500, yeah. It's not more than $3,500. It's grouped into a big pot of miscellaneous stuff. So we've got that whole pot totaled up to $250,000 that we're insuring at, you know, anything under $3,000 at a time.
That'd be a one-time event kind of thing though, right?
Yeah, or multiple. It could be multiple.
Right.
But if it all could come out of that.
Yeah.
So contents on the 165 Miami Street, we have currently $230-some thousand dollars. Uh, your rolling stock, your rolling vehicles are already covered. It's replacement costs or stated amount. So therefore, it doesn't leave a whole lot of miscellaneous equipment in the fire station at 165 that would be of that great a value. So a lot of it would still be covered under that.
That.
$230,000 itemized, yeah. So we thought, right now, we maybe ought to deduct lower that $230-some thousand down to about $130,000 on it. Excuse me. $100,000 even on the contents at 165 Miami Street.
I think that makes sense. If we don't have it there, then why insure it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because it's, it's almost, what you do have there might be, you can always file it under something else. If that station were to blow up or, or, you know, fire, whatever, all that I talked about, you know, it'd be hard to, us to come up with a list of items to probably, that are in there, that would take it up over at $230,000 after you take out the equipment that's in there that's already covered, like your concession trailer, your engine that's in there, you know, all that stuff. You got the miscellaneous stuff that we don't keep up at the news station, you know, turnout gear.
There's nobody else stored anything in there either, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, we cover some of our own stuff in there, like our kitchen equipment and stuff like that that's not, not attached probably. Uh, but we couldn't really come up with anything that we would be in dire straits of missing a lot of this, pretty old, used. Uh, yeah, for example, you know, we do have the replacement costs and stuff that if we kept at that $230, like the desks and stuff that are upstairs that are old desks, they would get replaced with new ones, but.
But why? Yeah.
Exactly. Not being these things.
Yeah.
So I guess what I was, what I was trying to do then is find ways to save money to cover the cost of increasing our liability insurance. And I think since we're increasing our deductibles, doing away with this, uh, contents insurance on 165, lowering it down to $100,000 should cover the extra, uh, $2,500 or $3,000 or for increasing up from three to five million in liability.
Okay. Once again, I'm sorry, is it due on 16th or 19th, Mike?
19th today.
19th is a Saturday.
That's our anniversary renewal, so it has to be in.
Our next meeting is the 15th.
Mm-hmm.
So is it too late for us to wait and, and get the answers by then? I don't know.
It mails to Michigan.
Oh, it's a mail. It's a, we have to physically mail it.
Get it out of mail.
Somebody just mentioned that today, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm going to have a donation six weeks from now.
Could we work via email on the, um, on the deductibles? I think that's the only thing I have a question about is really how much savings the deductibles will be. I don't, I'm, I'm good with reducing that.
Numbers anyway.
Yeah, right.
I'm good with it. You want to go ahead and pass the resolution tonight, then as I get the answers, I will email everybody out and they can weigh in on.
Yeah.
Which ones to go with.
Okay.
So you want to approve the resolution varied on what you provide us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, we got to get the premium amount before I can issue payment for it.
I don't have a problem with that because it should be, it should be pretty good. I mean, I, we get, or the email to finalize it.
Okay.
Yeah, we get approved it tonight and move forward.
All right. Alright, that makes sense. Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight, and we'll do the details via email.
I second that.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Colvin, second by Mr. Jacobs to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight, call Roderick, Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Patrick is absent, this resolution is served by adopt, this the first day of August twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Any, uh, any correspondence?
I have a couple pieces, uh, from Collet's, uh, propane, they have what they call the participation in the price protection plan, where you can sign the contract, you can get five to three thousand gallons of propane at a cost of two dollars five and five point nine cents per, per gallon. We've always, we've participated in this for a number of years, and in the past, uh, no, I don't know how, that we did last year or not, but Brad, I know what he is here, he'd always contact them, and they usually reduce it a little bit, but I don't know if they're still into that or not.
Two point zero?
Two dollars, five point nine cents.
Okay.
Two oh five.
Two oh five nine.
I, I have mine at home too, but I can't remember how much it, it is, but I know it's not quite that low, cause that's three thousand gallons, yeah, yeah.
We get a three thousand, and, uh, which will be delivered until May first, and after that, no credit.
But it's pre-bought, yeah.
Yeah. So if you wanna go with that, I can.
Where was that last year? What did you do last year? We didn't.
I don't remember doing it last year, to be honest.
I don't think we did.
We did.
Okay.
I have to go back to those, I can't remember, it seemed like it rings a bell to me around one second.
I remember you talking about it, um, in that Brad would call that, and then I don't remember what.
I don't remember the follow-up on you. And one other thing I have is from Energy Harbor, is that the fire station in over Waynesville, the one of Franklin Road, is now covered under the aggregation program to building Waynesville. Now, on the other two buildings, I assume, and I'm just assuming, that they'll be automatically kicked in, is that true, Gus?
Uh, we, we just today got the A.S. bill for this building, and it has the new Energy Harbor right on, so.
The other, the other two in the village I'm talking about.
Yeah, I.
They weren't in the plan, program.
Right.
The Miami and Harbor's lane, they weren't in, so I don't know if it's gonna be automatically, like they've said in the past, you, you have to opt out, so I guess that we'll just watch and see, see if they bring us on to that part.
They were opted in to begin with, right? Or were they opted in?
Not a question, didn't have that.
Not Waynesville, but we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did, but once he said the village of Waynesville.
Oh, they were outside, so we had, we had.
Somehow.
Did we have to call to enroll?
No.
No, it shouldn't be, yes.
No, I mean, did we do before?
No, Gus, Gus did, I think.
I guess we had that, the whole thing about it right now is kind of the best first call back in on it. The ones that enrolled later and didn't go to the automatic enroll, kick them out of the list.
That was in Wayne Township people.
It was Wayne Township. Now you're talking about people in the village.
Right, it's the village, yes.
Yeah.
But we haven't been in the program, so it should be kicked into it, and we don't wanna opt out, but we'll, I'll watch the bills to see if it comes in under the
Yeah.
in program.
Yeah, the only thing would be is if we opted in one of them, then they wouldn't automatically throw us into that rate, because we were, we chose to be in a separate rate to begin with.
Right, we did, yeah.
We just gotta watch that, like you said.
Here's the Collet. Two point three five nine, so.
That's what their offer was last year, we got it down some, I don't remember what it was, I can go back and look at that, it has come, it, it has came down some.
Yeah, that's good.
Typically, those letters they send out are just, is all just a standard letter that they send out.
To everyone, probably all the customers.
Yeah, and, and they don't, and they don't, they don't recognize, they, when they send it out, they don't recognize the fact that we're a governmental agency. So usually, one of the trustees usually makes contact with Collet, lets them know, hey, we're a governmental agency or municipality, and then they.
Refer back to our past years, that they've always gave us a mark on this.
They give, they give us a, a better price, yes.
I can tell you last two years for a spring fish fry.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
That's nice, so.
It's only under special pricing, so, okay, they'll cost you nothing this year. Good. It's always less than a hundred pounds.
Yeah, but it's.
Yeah.
Did they take that off what we had? Did they take that off the pre-buy then?
No, I've never seen, I've never seen them pre-buy.
Pre-buy for the shop.
Yeah.
I'm the, I'm the only one that has a the off, this building used, when it was first built, was on propane, but then we got, then gas ran out front, and we abandoned that and booked it gas.
Here's, here's two thousand and twenty, it was a dollar sixty-six is what they sent us, and we got it for, uh, no, a dollar forty-five nine, so we got twenty, we had twenty cents off.
Yeah.
I'll call him. You wanna, um.
Can't lose anything, huh?
Yeah. I'll make it, we'll make a copy of that and then I'll take it home with me.
Okay.
We're customers, you know, too, so.
Okay.
I can dial it, dial it before me.
Okay. So you say you're gonna try to call?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe you need to, I will too.
Okay, any other correspondence?
Um, have the Tarma in a report here, this is just miscellaneous stuff. Uh, they did authorize a eight hundred, uh, I won't speak. They did offer a rebate, so, I think it was eight hundred thousand dollar rebate. But that's amongst about a little over a thousand, uh, jurisdictions, so I don't know what ours will be, even on this Tarma. What we signed for, we will, we will get a rebate once we sign up, I don't know what that amount will be. Then got a letter from, uh, the five, the, the.
Oh, I don't know how to pronounce that, Knappheidi, is, is that what it is?
The truck manufacturer.
Knappheidi?
Knappheidi.
Knappheidi.
Yeah.
Absolutely like a sales certificate there, now took over all the, uh, uh, Kaffenburger.
Knappheidi's taken, yeah, okay, yeah, I, I've heard that through the line.
So, we can get that taken care of, and also, uh, I sent out to you or not, looks like I did, I think it came in afterwards. The Warren County, uh, Fairness Commission, Suzanne Mason, she wanted to know if the board of trustees wanted her to come to one of the meetings. They have to update the, they're in charge of updating the, uh, EPA Waste Management Five-Year Plan, and we, all jurisdictions have to sign off on it. Uh, there's a two-page flyer I can email out to you, and we've got till early September to do this, so maybe I just may forward it out to you, and then you can decide what much you need, or depend on a hundred to come or not.
Okay.
I don't think it's, it's necessary, and, uh, but it's truly up to you guys. There's not a whole lot of changes in the last five years, cause the county has done real well. There's some, about twenty years ago, the EPA required each county to we had to show twenty-five percent of our waste, uh, being recycled, and so we, all of our plans are focused on it in order to manage to get that mandate from EPA, uh, it's been done through businesses and schools and large, large places like that. So, the data I'll, I'll show you and send to you, it'll show you where we're, we're reading that criteria very well. Then it'll also show you the jurisdictions that have contracted, or like the building Waynesville and Coralwood, that have contracted with a, uh, sole provider. And then the county that's part of this, uh, program or part of this, uh, plan, uh, they certify what, uh, trash haulers can operate in Old County. So if you do not provide recycling, you have to, it's mandatory, you have to provide recycling along with trash and so forth, and the places that you can haul it to, and this is all, all the stuff that we have to do, because we're not our own entity, Old County does not have a, a dump facility, a site. Since we closed that down twenty-five years ago, and we have to meet these regulations, so. It's really, I'd say about two pages, there's not a whole lot of stuff changes, nothing that's the same, so I'll, I'll send that out to you guys probably tomorrow, and you can let me know if you want it through, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other correspondence? Elected officials comments? Don't have any tonight?
No, I think we said ours before about the, the fire levies, which is the big thing, talking about that, talking about the need that we have as a community, the needs all around, um, short-staffing, volunteers, and now the whole works, so. Pretty much, I think we said most of it right there, and we'll get out and we'll share with the community, and, and we'll make a couple events, and we agree, everybody. So I think it'll be good.
I don't think any need for a work session or executive. So I will make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-one P.M.
I shall second.
Okay, I'll leave it there.
I.